All right, now we have agenda item number four, AB 1600 impact fees presented by Darren Gale. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, Darren Gale, Interim Development Services Director. So I just want to introduce this item. We actually have Victor Erzick from Goodwin Consulting, who's actually going to give us the presentation. So briefly, the city on a quarterly basis holds a luncheon with our builders and developers. We call it our Builders, Developers, Engineer Luncheon. We did send out an email to that group, letting them know about the meeting tonight. We also let our Realtors Association know about the meetings tonight. I don't think that the Realtors actually heard about it tonight until about 4:30, when they sent out the email, but we let them know as soon as the agenda was posted. And so we have a number of folks here in the office, here in the council chambers, that are very interested, and I know that will speak. Just today, I received email from Cal Takkar that he could not be here, so he apologized. He's a local builder and developer, and I know I was also provided some additional information from Inner West that I just saw in my email, so I apologize. I don't have him here in my presentation, but as it goes on, I did make a copy of it so that I can share. So this evening, this presentation is very specifically about AB 1600 impact fees. So you heard about one development cost in sewer and water connection fees. There's also county impact fees, and there's school impact fees, which is under another law called SB 50. So this evening, we've asked Victor to come give a presentation from Goodwin Consulting Group. Victor's actually the person that led our last impact fee comprehensive update, so he'll be able to give the history to the council of, you know, since he started working on this back in 2007, when it was updated. Throughout his presentation, if you have any questions, please stop him. I can come up and answer any questions. Diana, any of, obviously, staff could answer any questions that she might have. But at this time, I'll turn it over to Victor, and then at the end, I can come back and help answer any very specific items that Victor might not be able to respond to. Thanks.
Good evening, members of the council, city staff, and members of the audience. Again, my name is Victor Erzick. I'm with Goodwin Consulting Group. And we prepared your last fee study that was updated in 2007. And I'm going to give you a general overview of development impact fees, as well as a specific overview of your development impact fee program. And this is an overview of what I'm going to discuss. The Mitigation Fee Act, which is commonly referred to as AB 1600. I'm going to go over a history of the Uba City Fee Program. Going to go over a general discussion of how the fees are calculated, and then specifically discuss the city's fee program, the facilities and the fees for the various categories. I'm going to talk about, or present a fee comparison of the city's fees to other cities' development impact fees, and I'm going to go over the fee implementation process as well. So the Mitigation Fee Act governs development impact fees. It was passed by the state in 1987. One of the requirements is that the fees are reasonably related to development impact on public facilities, also that fees are roughly proportional to impact, to the impact that development projects create. Those two statements, reasonably related and roughly proportional, were specific statements in federal court cases related to exactions, which development impact fees are. And what it basically says is you can't come up with fees arbitrarily. There has to be a methodology that specifically ties in the amount of fee to a certain type of development, whether it be residential, a commercial office, or industrial. And you have to demonstrate that nexus between the fee amount and the type of development. Fees cannot fund existing deficiencies, so if you have a deficiency in a certain facility, you can't expect that new development will cure that deficiency. And lastly, the Mitigation Fee Act prescribes accounting rules for the fee program where on an annual basis, and also on a five-year basis, you have to demonstrate what was done with the fees, how much was collected, how much was expended, that type of thing. So fees, impact fees, fund capital facilities. They can't fund operation and maintenance costs. And they're used to mitigate the impacts that development creates on capital facilities. So whether it's parks, roads, various government buildings, that's what mitigation impact fees pay for. The city's fee program was last updated in 2007. And since 2007, the only increases had to do with annual inflation adjustments. The fee program is a citywide program, so if you have any annexations into the city, those areas are also subject to development impact fees. And impact fees are typically paid at building permit issuance. So history on the city's fee program. The first impact fees were collected in the city in 1990. In 1997, the city updated those fees. And again, in 2001, and the 2001 fee update, those were phased over a three-year period. They were updated again in 2007. And again, the city phased the fee increases over a three-year period. In 2007, the city also enacted infill fees, and those were adopted at 50% of the regular fee rates. And those applied to transportation facilities. Let's see, I think parks, and also... and community facilities, thank you. In 2014, the city adopted the animal shelter fee. And in 2015, the infill fee program was expanded to all the fees except for the levy fee. And also updated the scope of what counts as infill development. And so why would a public agency update its fee programs? A lot of times, public agencies usually don't update them for five or more years. And so in the meantime, some of the facilities may not be applicable, or they may have been funded. The fees may not reflect what the current construction costs are to construct certain projects. And so fee programs, facilities are typically added, removed, or changed in scope when you update a fee program. And facilities' costs are updated, land costs are updated. Sometimes the boundaries are updated if there are annexations to a public agency boundary. And in general, the fees are revised based on those changes. And sometimes we have new impact fees added based on new facilities to a program. So for the fee calculation methodology, this is, yes?
Through the mayor. The slide before said we implemented in 2007, and you had some timelines on there in regards to the five-year audits, where I don't see those. Were those performed?
I don't know. Those were not done by us.
Just as a point of clarification, councilmen, what do you mean by five-year audits?
It says that annually and every five years, according to the presentation, that there would be a review of the impact fee program?
I do not, I think what you see is what you see, is how it's been implemented over the years. Unless anyone from city staff knows otherwise, I don't believe there's been a... So let me, as a point of clarification, in terms of use of funds, those funds are audited on an annual basis. And additionally, we do an annual review through the finance department to make sure that any monies that aren't used are identified for what use they will be used for. And why is that important? Because there's a requirement that Victor may mention tonight, because he knows this much better than I do frankly, because he does it for a living, that you use the money within five years. That said, if you have a certain project for which you're accruing funds, let's say a major interchange, and you have 10 million, and it's a $20 million project, you can accrue those monies over the course of numerous years beyond five years with the recognition that it requires additional years beyond five to fund. So there is an annual report that comes out, usually in the November-December timeframe, that accounts for that. But if the question of the audit here, meaning if there's a review and evaluation of what the fees are, what you see is what we've done.
Okay.
I believe in 2011, we brought forward the road portion of the impact fee to council because we reduced the right-of-way costs, and then we also updated the cost for asphalt and materials. And that resulted, if I recall correctly, in a decrease in the impact fee at that time.
I just wanted to, it was the, it's a previous slide that reflects in your presentation. There you go, the last bullet. That's the reason for the question.
Okay, so we do, we absolutely do that annually. I don't, you know, it's odd to think that it would say annually and every five years, if you're doing it annually. So we, I don't know if it's one or the other, or and, but we do it annually.
Well, the five-year accounting has to do with whether the money that is in accounts is still needed, and that needs to be demonstrated.
So that would be, I did answer that question. So I guess we've answered both then. Thank you for the opportunity to clarify.
Through the mayor. So are you... So the monies that are allocated within that five-year period, they have that five-year period to utilize the funds? And if they don't utilize the funds, then what happens?
Well, you have to demonstrate that you still need them. So if a project has a longer period where you're expending the funds, you're going to have to demonstrate that you still need those funds.
And how would they demonstrate that?
Basically, you know, through a report saying that, you know, this is a timeline of the project, and although we haven't expended the money in the account, we still do need it, based on the life of the project. That's brought to the council.
How often do these occur?
Well, the annual reports are basically looking at the money, the fee money that came in, and what it has been expended on. The five-year reports are just sort of a justification that the program and the money that is in the accounts is still needed.
So we should be having a report soon, in other words?
Yes, every five years.
The annual report I mentioned, I believe I mentioned, comes in November, December. So yes, you'll receive that report. It will be the one that the council adopted in either November or December. So it may not have been your council. It may have been the previous council. But that report is fresh in terms of the last three months. Furthermore, you have an annual audit that was just complete as well, that contains additional information.
Okay, because I haven't seen the report, so I'm trying to figure out if we are doing this annually. So those approved five years ago, we should have some sort of progress of they're on target or not target, correct?
Correct.
And so that's the unisys of my question. So the progress of these, who's reviewing the progress? And as those are reported to us, is that Darren doing that? Who is doing that?
It's, once I say it again, I'll get you the report. It was just adopted by the council. It was the finance department that puts it together, because they're the keeper of the money once it comes into the city. And yeah, it captures all, everything, and the council reviews, and the council approves it.
I think probably by the end of this process, we're kind of early, before we start doing the questions, a lot of detailed questions. But at the end of this, I think it'd be appropriate to perhaps get a copy to us again, if it was done previous to this new council taking their chairs, just to get an update, an overview, one or two pages of the status of every fund, and then the due date for the five-year review. And does that go to you, Steve? I can't direct him to do anything.
Anything the council mentions, we're just, staff's going to take care of it.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay, so...
Through the mayor. Yes. I just wanted clarification a little bit further on this. I think the spirit of this, and you're the expert, so correct me if wrong, was the annual accounting, but it was a review every five years. And this should have started back in 1990, correct?
Yeah, so five years, so in 95, for example, would be the first five-year period that you want to look back and see, look at your accounts to see if the money that's still there is needed.
So every 10 and five years, you know, five, 10, 15, 20 on up, we should have been doing a review, justification if those projects are still feasible, redirect the funds into newer projects. But that has not been done to this point. We've just been having the annual accounting, but it's a fixed five years. It's not a rolling five, correct?
That's right. Well, it's a five-year period is what the law says. So once you put money into the fee funds, at that point, that's when it starts, that year one, and then five years later, you do the five-year report.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the methodology to calculate the fees, and this is sort of a high-level review of that methodology. First, the future development in the city is determined. And agencies will either use the build-out of, say, the general plan, or they'll use a timeframe of 10, 20, 30 years. In this case, for the city, it was build-out of the sphere of influence. And so that was used in the city's fee program. Second step is to identify the capital facilities needed to serve new development. Third step, determine the allocation factors to spread the facility costs. And this is where nexus is developed between the impacts from development onto facilities. So allocation factors could be, for example, trip generation for transportation projects and the transportation fee calculation per capita for parks, because parks are determined based on acres per thousand residents. So those are two examples of allocation factors. And then step four, include costs for facilities that benefit new development. So again, if there are any costs that, in the capital improvement program, that are there to fix an existing deficiency, for example, a roadway that is under capacity, that could not be funded with money from new development. Number five, subtract funds from other sources, like from expected money coming from the federal government or the state government. That money would be subtracted from the total cost to come up with a net amount to fund through the fee program. Next, allocate facility costs to new development based on the allocation factors. So again, the allocation factors again come in to establish that nexus between the impact from different types of development to the impact that they create. Seven, calculate the fees then based on a residential unit or a per-building square foot for non-residential development. And so here are the different fee categories for Uba City's fee program. Roadway fee, parks and recreation fee, police fee, fire fee, the civic center fee, corporate, corporation yard fee, library fee, the flood control fee, and the animal control fee. And so for the road fee, I'm showing the fee rates in 2007 and what they currently are for a single-family unit, and then the increase over that period. Roadway facilities improvements in this fee category totaled approximately $350 million. And this fee was calculated by the traffic consultant, Fear and Peers. Next fee is for parks and rec. As you can see, for a single-family unit in 2007, the fee was calculated to be $6,160. It's currently $7,650. That's an increase of 24%. And again, this was all annual inflation adjustments, as opposed to revising the CIP. Facilities included in this program include park improvements and land at three acres per thousand residents, includes open space improvements and land at two acres per thousand residents, two community centers, two aquatic centers, and vehicles. For the police fee, you see the fee rates in 2007 and 2019. Facilities included a 69,000-square-foot police station, and this would replace the existing station. Land costs associated with that station, patrol vehicles, and police equipment. For the fire fee, the fire facilities include Fire Station 1, 2, and 7 expansions, Fire Station 4 relocation, a new fire station in the southwest sphere of influence, a training facility, fire trucks and vehicles, and equipment. Civic center fee, facilities include a civic center building, vehicles, and IT infrastructure. Corporation yard fee, facilities include a corporation yard building, storage facilities, land, vehicles, and equipment. For the library fee, includes 31,940-square-foot library building, the land associated with that, and also books. The flood control fee includes levy improvements. Animal control fee is for animal control building. And so this is the total fees. For 2007, total amount for a single-family residential unit is $23,386. Today, it's $29,490, and that's a 26% increase. And so here we have a fee comparison to other cities for a single-family residential unit. And one thing to keep in mind here is development impact fees are just one financing mechanism. There are others, such as community facility districts, which issue bonds. You have assessment districts also issue bonds. And so we're looking at just one financing mechanism. And so it's not necessarily apples-to-apples when you look at other cities, because they could be using other financing mechanisms, which would then reduce their impact fees. So you need to keep that in mind. And so first column is for Uba City, and there's that $29,490.
Question real quick, sir, if you don't mind, before you get too deep into that? Go ahead.
Yes.
Through the mayor, I know, and maybe the city manager can help here too, the city does have CFDs. And those would be stacked on top of these fees as well?
So we have, so the CFDs we have are CFDs for services. We do not, we have not historically structured capital facilities, CFDs. And so the CFDs for services are paid for by the citizens when they move in. And just for a point of clarification, the CFDs you're talking about are also inclusive of capital facilities? And the reason, when I say apples-to-apples, what I'm thinking apples-to-apples, rather, is your impact fee money goes toward capital. And for the benefit of the public, what does capital means? It means the hard infrastructure. It doesn't go towards services and supplies or operations. It goes toward a physical structure such as this. And so the community facilities district, in similar fashion, is structured to raise the necessary funds to fund the hard, maybe a sewer transfer line or a water distribution main. So the CFDs you're talking about are capital?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So that's something that we as a city can look to. So for example, if the council looked at these impact fees and said, well, they're really high, there might be the alternative where the impact fee goes down, the community facilities district fee goes up, and that the two together still achieve the same outcome that the council desires.
Yeah. Okay, so looking at the cities here, I've included Lincoln, Roseville, Folsom, West Sacramento, and Elk Grove. Lincoln's fee, again, this is for a single-family residential unit, is $13,230. So that's $16,260 less than Uba City's fee. Roseville is at $17,278. And again, with Roseville, they have a lot of zones. And so what we did is take an average of the zones here. So some zones may be higher than others in Roseville. But what we're looking at here are the average of the different fee categories. And there, so the average is $12,213 less than Uba City's current fee. Folsom is at $19,710. So again, that's less than Uba City. West Sacramento is at $32,710, which is about $3,200 more than Uba City. And Elk Grove is at 40, almost $43,000 per unit, and that's $13,410. And there's a visual representation of that. So Uba City's...
How did you decide on comparing them to these cities? Is there already a standard for that?
I was trying to get something in the local area with a fairly close population to the city. Elk Grove, of course, has a much higher population. But I was trying to get something similar in terms of population and size.
So Woodland or other municipalities wouldn't be closer to that?
Yeah, yeah. And I actually found out that the council wanted to see fee comparisons just recently, so I tried to put together what I had. I can update this if need be.
Because you mentioned that the fees, some of these fees that you're comparing them to does not, is not inclusive to almost, maybe apples-to-apples is more like an apple to an orange, or something to that effect?
Yeah, I mean, the best kind of comparison would be to look at all the financing components. That's a more extensive job to look at. For example, are there CFDs that are paying for certain facilities? Or are there assessment districts? Or are developers donating, dedicating land through Quimby, as opposed to including the price of the land into a fee? So there are different things to look at, you know, to try to make it more comparable.
Were you going to add, Darren?
So just add, we tried to make this simplified. Talk about AB 1600 fees. If we add all of it, we could be here for a couple hours, for example. And I think it would be great for another councilman if you want. So for example, Roseville, they just recently published a study. They talked about the full impacts of the cost of doing development in Roseville. And on average, they're $72,285 per door. So their impact fee that you might hear, hey, they're in, because I think, you know, what I hear is developers coming to us and saying, hey, your impact fee is $16,000 more than the city of Lincoln. And this, that's what's being presented. In order to take that full idea of what each community charges with all of the other types of financing they use, it takes a lot of time. We can use what's out there, which Roseville, like I said, they've recently published a study. And so I pulled it, I've read it, so I kind of know what they have. But just to put into perspective, Roseville's impact fee appears $17,000. Their total cost, according to them, on average, is $72,285. But that includes development impact fees, processing fees, plan area fees, school impact fees, and developer contributions, which sometimes are included as part of the development agreement. So that's why it takes, and each plan area is different in each community.
So even that, Darren, the 72 grand from Roseville, that gets more for that person building that home than what we have listed here?
Yes.
That includes more?
Yes, and they have a high of $92,000 and a low of $64,000. To give you an idea of what, if you were developing in Roseville today in a plan area, you could be paying somewhere between $65,000 and $93,000.
And the $65,000 would be close to what we're representing here by 30,000?
Well, so their school fees...
What would our equitable number be? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, so I'm just going to throw up a very round number, 50 to 55,000.
50 to 55 versus 62, you said?
Yeah.
64, okay.
And you know what? The nice thing is we have a couple home builders here. For example, we have Inner West. They can tell us exactly what it costs. She provided me some information for Buick County today that I'll send by email. Also, I received information from Cal-Tacar, from Crown Development, who provided me what Winters is. So he said for a project he had in Yuba City, he was looking at about 45,000 a door. And Winters was 42. Like I said, it just depends on the plan area.
Right.
Which jurisdiction. And also it can change here depending on where you are with drainage, right? Are you part of Gilcizer or Live Oak? So each area can be different. Some cases, it might be a huge amount. Some cases, it might be minimal.
All right, thank you.
And then as a follow up on the impact fees, we will get that report. But I can tell you on November 20th, the council did adopt a report. And as part of that report on an annual basis, they've been making the findings that are required of the five year reports. But they've been doing that annually. I don't know how many years that's been, but we'll make sure and have a copy of that provided to the council members. But that happened on November 20th.
I think for the, to make a fully educated, you know, understanding of what you're presenting to us, I would really, you know, mayor prefer that we would have actual comparisons, not perhaps there's this and this and that, that we truly don't know what the impact fees. Because if we're talking about AB 1600, I really like to have, what is it comparable to another city? Because at this moment, I'm hearing two different or five different answers.
Yeah, councilman, that's a good question. So what I can tell you is these are comparable to AB 1600 fee studies. The problem is they add other things.
Is the other thing, and that's, I think, what we're looking for. 1600 is one way to obtain money. But if we're talking, if we're up here to try to make a decision, it's important that we have, well, literally apples to apples. I don't want to be cliche, but otherwise, we're kind of misled. And more importantly, the public is misled by thinking, holy moly, $16,000 more than Lincoln. And they stop right there and then we get the phone calls, which is fine. But it's important that we all, everybody, literally know what do we provide? And what would another city such as Lincoln charge for the same exact thing? I realize that's a heavy lift, but it's important that we have that. Thank you, Darren.
Through the mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
The question I have in regards to your chart here is you've chosen a better sample than I saw in the previous report that we got at 3 o'clock this afternoon, okay? But there's one common thread I see through this. Lincoln thriving community, Roseville thriving community, Folsom, West Sac, and even Elk Grove are all thriving. They all have a higher median income. So the people living in those areas can of course afford a higher median priced house. Looking back at what these allocations are coming from or for, you know, animal control. We have an agreement with Sutter County, going back to a library fee, just to hit some points. We have a great Sutter County library. So looking at some of these issues, do we have, you know, questions come to mind? Do we have this money stockpiled from the last 20 years that we've been collecting these fees to do these projects? And then how do we take into consideration the fact that our residents and the median income, as we heard in the last presentation, we were 80-plus percent below the 200% of the national poverty level? How can we charge rates that are close to thriving municipalities that have much higher median income to our Yuba City? You know, one of the keys to fixing our previous problem that we had tonight was more development. More people living here, getting those. So I agree with the mayor. We've got to have the full picture and we've got to start figuring this out because this is not apples to apples. And there's more to this story than what we have here. So can you elaborate on how this, you know, how do you take in consideration the median income? And when you're looking at this, or do you just ignore it completely?
Oh, no, not at all. I mean, you can't sell homes if you're pricing your residents out of the market. So I mean, the fees have to be adjusted and the total financing package, you know, the developers will tell you, you know, that have to be within a certain percentage, you know, of the home value. If it exceeds it, then you can't build. And so, you know, that's why, when I say that, you know, we're not looking at apples to apples here. You know, you have to look at the total picture, you know, of how much debt is also out there on the land, you know, either through an assessment district or a community facility district. And, you know, evaluate the total financial picture as opposed to just impact fees.
All right, one more question, if I may, probably a few more. On the library impact fees, either for our city manager or for Darren, is this the money that we're collecting on behalf of the county?
No.
It's not?
No, we don't collect, we collect, the county has established fees, the city has established fees.
Okay.
Anything you're seeing up here are city specific fees. So the question, the leading question, the next question that councils, because we've had this library fee for, you know, probably 20 years. Why?
Yeah.
And it's because it was always envisioned that it would be part of the, there's a community center component. And that it would be part of a community center that may not be, you know, the cities, to the, actually credit of old city managers, namely Jeff Foltz, he was always forward looking and looking beyond what the city already has and seeing what the city could have in the future. And he thought, you know, this could be a library, that's not a conventional library where you're just having books, but it could be an electronic library. And it could be for the kids to come after school to, you know, to take advantage of the computers and part of an overall community center. So it would be a city centric component, where I was born and raised as a city with a library. And to this day, it has a library. Not a lot of cities do. Lincoln has a library, I believe, there. And I think as these times have gotten tougher, more cities have probably wished they didn't have a library, frankly. But that has been that component. What we've done in conversation with the county that said, is worked with James Oxner at the library and said, how can we use these funds in order to enhance the library that we already have? And we actually used a portion, a very small portion, to help him bring in an architect and do some idea generation of what they can do with their existing footprint to get better use of the library that they already have. A really long answer to your question, but just to show you that what we're trying to do is be creative with these monies. So we're not just, you know, to the councilman's point, Councilman Shaw, that is, you know, how do we, we got a great library. How do we make it even better with what we have? And with regard to the, how these fees are set, you cannot create better facilities in the future than you have today. Okay, so you can't put a higher burden on the future community than the one you have. And so we've always said as a community that we want development because it's part of the lifeblood of a community, but we don't want it to diminish the quality of life in Yuba City. So we want it to be at least as good as what we have. And that's the standard that we've set. What's really unfortunate is you're exactly right. Our economy, our socioeconomics are not that of which Victor's showing us this evening. And the problem comes is when we're putting in a road or we're putting in a park, we don't get discounted rates because we have that socioeconomic condition. And so the cost of putting in those improvements in the Rosevilles is the same as costing to put in Yuba City. So we're trying to set the rates and of course, as your council directs, we'll readdress them in a way that we don't diminish the quality of life, but also respect the fact that you've got folks who are building homes. And they need to be able to sell those homes. And if they can't, then it's this quagmire and it's broken. So we want to set them low enough that the homes can be built, but high enough that we don't diminish the quality of life here in Yuba City. So, so there you go. Thanks.
Oh, thank you. I think calling it a library fee kind of threw a chain around my axle, use the CHP term here. Because we, the library is the library and it's doing well now. I know we want to do some improvements to it, but for collecting fees for 20-something years.
30 years.
How much do we have in there and what are we doing with it?
And that's information that we can bring back to you.
I would appreciate that.
At a future meeting. But I will tell you, our police and fire, I won't be shy in telling you that those are like a million dollars or more in the negative.
Yeah.
Okay? And so there aren't, this isn't just like this big pot of money. Now, the road fund probably has $10 million in it. But if I looked over at the Public Works Director and said, and how much, oh, it's not that much, pardon me. You've been very good in implementing projects. Thank you, Diana. But that's a fund that does accrue. But if you asked her, what's the total amount of projects to be built? She'd throw out a number of hundreds of millions of dollars.
And I suppose, because it all goes into one bucket, right? And we take the projects or are they allocated?
It doesn't. Well, so it does go into different buckets. For example, public safety, it goes into transportation, goes into public facilities, and goes into parks and recreation. So you're exactly right. Within that transportation bucket, that you can build any of those projects when, within there. And that's at the council's annual discretion as part of the capital improvement program. So you have broad discretion to use those monies because you're looking at a growing city and you're trying to figure out from the policy side, where the best place to put improvements to encourage those, the growth. Yeah.
All right. The, I'd just like to, if we're going to put it towards, if we have a million dollars in negative for public safety, but we're going to use library money for that, I like to call it duck a duck and then call it public safety money personally.
No, it's just negative and we're trying to, you know, build homes to backfeed it. In the meantime, frankly, your council's directed us because of that negative to move money from our general fund into the impact fee money because you're saying you can't just let it be negative.
Right.
Yeah.
The other thing would be if we're doing capital improvements and we have a, what is it, a animal control fee? We have a brand new facility already. So if we're collecting money for that, where would that be if it can't be for O and M?
So you're collecting money for one of two things. You're collecting money on the debt service that you have so that the new people coming in are paying for the facility. If there weren't debt service, then the statement would be that that, as that facility eventually, as a city grows, there'll be a trigger point where you need to add kennels and you need to add additional space. And that would be the capital money you'd use for that.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Follow up on those. Steve, I'm not sure if you're going to be able to answer this or if you will. These 1600 impact fees, are these designated funds or restricted funds?
They are absolutely restricted. And with regard to, and okay, so if Robin were here as a CPA, there's designated, there are different degrees. And your council has discretion on where to designate those monies. But here, I'll give you an example with regard to restriction. The county was very interested in paving their front lot at the library. And they said, we want to use, could you give us the impact fees so we can pave the lot? That's not an expansion of the facility. So that isn't, that's an operating and maintenance issue. So you're restricted on how you can use those funds. So when you're looking at our financial statements, because you, I'm sure you'll go back and as you look at them, they are separate and apart from our general monies of the city.
Okay, let me further clarify. I get 1600 fees are restricted, but the subaccounts under that, are they designated or restricted? Because that makes a huge difference in what I'm seeing here and how we've expenditures over time. Because they can all be restricted under AB 1600 for the capital improvements. And we've collected these fees. But then prior councils could have had the discretion to, you know, vary them from public safety to here because they're designated underneath. So I go back to my original question. Are they restricted or designated? I'm talking at the subaccount level.
Yeah, I don't have a good question, answer for your question because I probably don't fully understand it.
Okay, if we could either have a follow up query with Robin because we really need to know the answer to that.
And I can't, I guess I can't appreciate it. So we probably have to have an offline conversation so I can get a deeper level of the distinction between the two definitions of the words you're using. So, thank you.
Anything else, real quick? Thank you.
Okay, so if the city should go forward and update its capital facilities fee program, first thing that would need to be done would be to update the 2007 fee study. Once that has been accomplished, then there would be an outreach with the developers and the BIA, get their input on the revised fees. City council would then hold a public hearing on the fees. And then the first reading of the fee ordinance would occur in a subsequent, or actually, the public hearing could be held at the same city council meeting as the first reading of the fee ordinance. In a subsequent regularly scheduled meeting, the fee ordinance would then be adopted. The fees would then take effect 60 days after the fee ordinance is adopted. And then after that, just maintenance of the fee program, including annually increasing the fees based on an inflation index. That concludes my presentation.
Darren, did you have more?
So I could just go over a couple of items that I've heard this evening?
Thank you.
So first, to bring back to the council, the annual or five year reports and kind of how long we've been doing that and provide that to the city council. Another one is, sorry, I went to my, is after the city manager has an understanding, restricted dedicated fees to make sure that we bring back a response as it relates to that. A response related to what are the current account balances in each account and where that stands over the last, you know, as soon as we've had it. I do have a brief list of kind of where we are, but the council, the fees are broken up into roads, parks and recreation, community facilities, levies, admin, and then there's a couple other VISA fees. So under community facility, that's fire, police, library, civic center, corporation yard, and animal control. They're all under one, but each one has a separate account, a separate accounting. We can provide you that. Also, a full detailed list of total cost of development to do development in the city of Yuba City along with other communities. That will take some time.
Yeah.
That's not just a simple, easy analysis. Like I said, I was able to grab Rosevilles and so they have some information. That was back in 2017, I think is when they put it together. But that'll take a little bit more time. The other ones, obviously, we can provide those back to the city council as quickly as possible. So it sounds like from a couple of council members, the idea would be before you could really make a determination and you need to understand the full cost of doing development in the city of Yuba City. And as soon as we can provide that report, I can't tell you, I'll have to sit down with Goodwin Consulting to see what the cost would be for them to put that together and when we can bring that back to the city council. So I don't want to make a promise that I can't deliver tonight. And then I do know that we have a number of people within the development industry that are probably very interested in commenting on the fees. And I can answer any of the questions you might have.
I appreciate that. So yeah, I think it's very important to come back forward before we can make a decision with all of that information you just discussed. I know that one's going to be very entail, but we'd appreciate that so we can make a good decision. And not necessarily with the intent of lowering fees. We will if it's appropriate and necessary. But to understand what they are and why they are so we can justify that to folks and they can have a full understanding as to what they're paying, where the money goes. I do have one more quick question, if I may. In reading the handout, commercial folks are, their fees were based on something they've mentioned employees as .24 of a person? Does that ring a bell?
Yes.
And so can you explain that? Because the way I, the way I read it is we have residential and then we have commercial, we have employees. So we charge them .24 of a person. But if that employee is also a resident, seems like we might be double dipping, which I don't think is appropriate. So explain if you don't mind.
Right. The .24 is based on the average number of amount of hours worked by an employee, which is 40, divided by the total hours in a week, which is, I believe, 164. So that comes out to .24. It's generally understood that employees have less of an impact on city services than residents do just because, you know, they're at their place of employment a lot less than residents are at home. And so, but it's not empirically known what that exact relationship is. It could, it could actually vary from a location to location. And so that being the case, we use .24, you know, way back when we developed the fee program years ago. Other agencies will put more weight on an employee like .5 or maybe even a one-to-one relationship. But as long as it's a reasonable relationship, and this is something that is done industry wide using the .24, you know, then it's acceptable. A methodology of. of assigning a certain, uh, impact to, to employees.
All right.
Now, now should, you know, uh, other agencies feel like employees have more of an impact, they will actually use point five or maybe even one-to-one relationship. Um, I've seen that as well. Um, as long as it's, it's a reasonable, uh, relationship, you know, you can, you can do that.
All right. So it's industry standard and I can appreciate that, but it still seems to me if, if that employee lives in the city, we're already hitting them when they, for the house they're living in.
Right.
Now we're hitting them for where they work too.
Um, well, at the same time, you can also have employees, you know, that may be the case at some point in time, but you can also have, uh, another company take over that facility and they may not have an employee that actually lives in the city. So.
So now we're what-ifing it.
Pardon me? Yeah. I mean, i- it's a very, uh, nebulous kind of, um, issue.
Yeah, clearly. All right. But it is industry standard and we can, we still have the option to do what we choose to do up here though. All right. Thank you very, very much.
So Mayor, could, could you answer a question?
Yes.
If, if you were to change that, how would it affect the other impact fees?
Well, if you reduce the, the impact on non-residential development, you're going to increase the impact on residential development. So you're basically going to push over, push fees, uh.
We're pushing it, we're pushing it. That, that's our deal here is for us to decide up here. Do we have more discussion with some more contemporary information as to whether we feel it's necessary to even, we may want to keep the lid where it is and, um, but we'll weigh those options once we get to more information. But yes, I, I realize we had to, it's kind of like we, recent discussions with Recology, they have a, a set amount of money at cost to do operations and we either rob Peter or pay Paul. I get that.
Right.
Um, the balloon analogy, if you will. So, but thank you for that clarification as well. Did you have something, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just, a question for you. The, what I'm hearing from, from our staff and our expert is there's going to be a bullet added in between, in the, uh, fee implementa, uh, fee implementation process to where before this goes out any further, we're going to have more, uh, pertinent information brought before us so we get a full understanding before we start sitting down with developers and stuff. Is that correct?
Yes, based on what Mr. Gale just said. He went down the rundown of what he's going to provide for us.
Okay. Um, could I, uh, offer a suggestion?
Yeah.
To you, Mr. Mayor. When we get to, then it would be the third bullet where we conduct the outreach with developers and such. Um, could we at that point in time, instead of just having, um, relations back and forth and discussions between our staff and developers, really get our community involved and form either an ad hoc committee or, or, or some kind of committee that's comprised of a couple of council members, couple of developers, couple of real estate, uh, brokers, couple of, uh, lenders. So we get a good picture of how this will affect our community all the way down the line so that we have a lot more in-depth discussions, not just from the data, but from the real world impact that's going to hit our community to help us better make a decision in the long run.
Wouldn't that be the purpose of the initial outreach to begin with?
Right. But it doesn't clarify how we're going to do that outreach. It just says conduct outreach. So I'm offering up, uh, an idea on how to do that because typically my understanding has been between our staff and those people and the council has never been a part of it.
So, uh, Mayor Harris, uh, funny. Uh, in 2006, I was on the opposite side of the table. Um, uh, Councilmember Boomgarden was sitting on the side of the table of city staff and, uh, actually the council did set up an ad hoc committee of two council members. Uh, Councilmember Rory Ramirez, I think, and maybe Councilmember John Miller. Uh, and they invited the development industry to the table to have just the discussion. And if the council wants to do that, we can definitely, uh, put together that meeting. So, so in 2007, when these were adopted, I can tell you, I had the B, I, I was working the BIA. We spent about a hundred thousand dollars, um, hiring some consultants to, to look into the minutia of every single item within the AB 1,600 fee study to make sure that it was justifiable. It was actually, uh, the fee that you see now was actually proposed at well, a little over $60,000. And with, uh, the work between, uh, the professional consultant, staff and the private sector, the development industry, both resident, residential developers and non-residential developers, that's what came before the city council for approval. That's also where it came about the idea of trying to implement these over a few years. So if that's the council's direction, um, I've, I know that process well. Um, I think we've probably had 12 meetings and, uh, you know, it was, uh, at the time, Mayor Ramirez says as many meetings that they needed to have so that it could go before the city council. So, uh, whatever the council's direction is, we can definitely, uh, implement that.
Uh, to have no problem with that at all. Well, my tendency though, is to not oppose it. However, perhaps wait until you come back with your updated information and at that meeting decide what step to move forward with in that regard.
That was my intent, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Very good.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Typically, um, for a presentation, there's not, there's not necessarily public comment period. However, I'm going to have one anyway because there's a lot of people I think will have endured our questions and our comments and, uh, want to say something. I know Holly does out there. She's just itching. You got that look on your face. But, uh, one I move forward to, we'll open public comment period. Anybody would like to comment on anything we've discussed today, please, uh, get in line at the podium. I am going to start with our, uh, someone, um, and, uh, forgive me, Thomas, but, uh, is your last name Burris? Burns. Okay. Why don't you step forward first, sir?
Okay. My, uh, comments are on fee fee. That means every fee imaginable. So, not, I'm not directly related to the, um, developer end of it. Okay. But I am a subcontractor. And, uh, the fee that's irritating me is the business license fee. Okay. So as a, as a subcontractor, we have to pay a business license fee in the city of Yuba City. Okay? Because we have our office here. But every other city that we go into, they're getting a, a business license fee from us too. I mean, that's double dipping, triple dipping, you know, and I'm, I'm a little concerned about that because I just did my, uh, application. And years gone by, we've paid, if you're a contractor, it said, pay $35, skip the line 19 and send in your money. Okay. So I got an email back from someone in the city that said, no, we need a, a total of, uh, accounting of all your gross receipts. And I sent back an email saying, well, I'm a contractor. Oh no, we still need that. And I said, okay. So is that gross receipts of work done in Yuba City? Now, I, I didn't even have much gross receipts, period, last year. And, and it's not the money issue, but the issue is that you're, that I'm getting nickelled and dimed everywhere I turn by every government agency and from the state, the contractors license board, they're raising their fees, they're raising from the, um, oh, I guess I'm out of time already, huh?
No, you have a little bit more.
Oh, okay. So that's, that's my irritation. Uh, why would a man have a business in this city and, and pay his business license fee, but every other city that he goes to wants to get a little piece of his hide too? So that's, that's what's irritating me. And, uh, is there any part of a person's life that government does not want to be involved in? That's my question. And I'm ticked off about it.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Anybody else care to speak? All right. I knew it.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jamie McLeod. I'm a, a real estate agent with Coldwell Banker Commercial and, um, Darren knows I've been a thorn in his side for a couple of years regarding impact fees. It's really important not to just look at what the impact fees are. You also need to consider what are the median home values? It's easy to say, uh, you know, Darren said, we're somewhere 50, 55 all-in. Roseville's 72,000 roughly. But if I can sell a house for a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand dollars more, I'm going to go to Roseville. When it comes to the national builders especially, the bottom line is the bottom line. That is one of the reasons why we're not seeing growth here. I reached out to a couple of home builders I know and their response was, well, impact fees, uh, land development costs, all those things adds up where it just doesn't, you know, look feasible here versus taking less risk out elsewhere. Uh, the other thing you need to be aware of is the new governor is starting to tie of affordable housing and low-income housing production to grant funds. If Yuba City is not building anything and meeting the regional housing needs assessment, we're going to be in big trouble because we may not get transportation funds. We may not get housing funds. We may not get park funds that would be available to other cities. Uh, just in closing, according to the National Association of Home Builders, for every $1,000 increase in the price of a home, nationally we're pricing out 127,500 families. In California, that number is 10,000. So imagine that if we're up $15,000 higher than we should be, we are affecting 150,000, um, potential home buyers. So hopefully, uh, the council will do something about the fees and we can get some of these people in here and building and continue to grow our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody who would like to go after Holly, please step up, take a spot on the wall?
I'm not even going to use all my time. Mayor and council members, um, my name's Holly Shackelford and I have been with Inner West Homes for over 25 years. I have a unique position there as I'm involved in developmental of the land, what we actually build, and I am the face of the Realtor. So everything does trickle down to me. I see the customer. I work with the customer. I give the customer the news of what their taxes are going to be. Um, and I get asked all the time, why are your prices so high? Why are my taxes 1.7% in your new subdivision? Well, I can go over them line by line and educate them on that. Then I have to explain to them that our lot cost was $84,000 per lot, highest lot cost we've ever had in the time that I have worked there. And from what I was told was also obviously cents then too. But $137,000 before we start a home. People say, what about your subs? Maybe they charge you too much. We use local subcontractors. You're right. I know for a fact we can lower some of our costs. We can get some, some subcontractors from Sacramento and they're going to do it for less. 90% of our subs are Yuba City subs. They born here, raised here, spend their money here. That's always been Ron Scott's philosophy. So who do we go to? I have been fighting impact fees, as some people know in here, for 10 years. I do feel they're too high. Um, and as you guys, if, if, if you can actually see how the building permits that are pooled are less and less as our costs go up and up, I believe you're going to wipe out building in this town. We are the last local builder who has never stopped building in over 35, going on 40 years. But I will be honest, it's to the point that as we look and look and look for more development land, it doesn't pencil out. The people here only make so much money. And unless we can figure out how to change that, we're maxed on what we're selling. November, December, nothing. Dead. I did make two sales last week. So that's my two cents. If you form that committee, I'd love to be on it.
Thank you, Holly.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Chris Starkey. Um, I am actually not a resident of Yuba City, but I wanted to kind of piggyback on something that Mr. Burns said. Uh, so I'm in the county, which does not require a business license. But of course, if I want to come into the city to do any business, got to have a license. And my biggest issue with the business license, and it's only because I used to run the business license program for Yolo County. All it is, is a revenue generator. What do the business owners, what do they get for a business license? Oh, piece of paper on your wall? Big deal. Who cares? Is there any programs out there that can help the people who have a business license to, to learn something they need to learn? Help maybe the small business owner learn something they didn't know that some of these bigger businesses know? That makes the justification for saying, here's my money. What do I get for it? Cause right now I don't see that anybody gets anything for it, other than a little piece of paper to put on their wall that really doesn't mean anything. Um, and then I, I heard a comment earlier, I'm not sure who said it, but if you really think about it, to build, to get developers to build in Yuba City, I mean, obviously we've had some building, but think about what we have in this town. We, right now, the only things, the only thing that seems to come in here is coffee shops and fast food. Well, guess what? We don't need any more coffee shops. And I think this town's fat enough already. We don't need any more fast food joints. So I think that, I think there's got to be some way to put some focus on bringing in the right businesses to this community, not businesses that everybody wants, businesses that we need, but bringing in the right business and then figuring out how we bring things in here that can bring jobs, such as trade schools, that kind of a thing. I, I think that's where a focus really needs to be so that once that starts to climb, guess what follows it? As soon as that commercial starts to climb, the residential climbs behind it. Watch how Roseville did it. When they started doing all the commercial, the residential came right behind it. Now look at where they're getting their money and look at what kind of money we're getting. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tom Tucker, Harder Packing Company, 1321, Harder Park Way, Yuba City. Um, as I was watching Victor's presentation today, pretty much everything seemed to rely on impact fees. And specifically here, I want to talk about commercial too. Commercial brings a lot of benefit. When you look on the one side of the impact fee and you have $34 a square foot per impact fee per building, um, it's tough sell in this market. Um, you need to look at the benefit side. If we bring you a project such as we brought you Super Walmart, we brought you Home Depot, I'm sure the city's made good money on that. Um, we brought you quality projects, but I can't do it at $34 per building's worth. But you need to look at the fees on the benefit side, not just the impact sides. And that's all I hear here tonight is impact, what, but not what the benefits are. Also I noticed in, uh, Chico, they've, uh, last summer looked at their impact fees and in Yuba City, whether you're building 1,000 square foot home or you're building 35, uh, 3,500 square foot building, you pay the same impact fee. But I'll guarantee you that 3,500 square foot home with four garages with, uh, twice as many people live in it are going to have more impact fee than that 1,800 medium income house. So they have adjusted their impact fee so that the smaller sized dwellings don't pay the same impact fee. There's a, a different pr- proration of the impact fee. Um, uh, I have much more, but I think I'm going to close there and I'll, uh, share it with the committee when the committee, and I would look forward to being on any committee, is a residential developer, multifamily and a commercial developer. Um, we wish this city of Yuba City success, but we'd like to be successful also. Thank you. Any questions? I'm here to answer.
Nope. Thank you, Tom.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could add to your list, Darren, I think that's a good point. If we can maybe get ahold of Chico's study and, uh, consider, um, give firm information on the spectrum, the kind of continuum of fees based on square footage. I think that's a good idea, at least potentially. Okay. Anybody, anything else from the council? All right.